Good evening. I'll call to order the June 20th, 2017 meeting of the Arvada Planning Commission. Ms. Brown, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Hee Griffith.
Here.
David Goff.
Here.
T.O. Owens.
Here.
Patricia Connell.
Doug McGee.
Here.
Steve Hannan.
Here.
The minutes from May 16th, 2017 have been submitted. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved as printed. We have no general business and no reports, so we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, anyone who wishes to address the commission may do so regarding items that are not listed as public hearings on tonight's agenda. The public hearings on tonight's agenda are the shops at Ralston Creeks, Trinity Storage, and the Candellas outline development plan. Additionally, we ask that you hold any comments that you may have regarding any applications been filed with the city or is likely to be filed with the city until the public hearing on those items. Where we will welcome your comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the commission at this time? Thank you. At this time, I'll explain the procedure for the public hearings. I'm sorry. Sir, please come to the podium. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Can you make the offer to speak again later?
Yes, sir. During each of the public hearings, we'll make the offer to speak. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to explain the procedure for public hearings. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation, and after that presentation, I'll ask for those in favor of the applicant to speak, then those in opposition. The applicant will then be given the ability to rebut. After all the testimony has been heard, the public input portion of the hearing will be closed, and all questions will be taken from the planning commission. I would not like to swear in anyone who wishes to speak tonight in any public hearing before the commission. If you wish to speak, please rise. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in the matters before the commission are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer "I do."
I do.
Please be seated. The first case we'll hear tonight is ASP 2017001, the Shops at Ralston Creek Alternative Sign Program. Staff, are the posting logs and notification requirements been met?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We are required to post signs on the property, mail out letters to the neighborhood, and also was notified in the newspaper. And those are all in order.
Thank you very much. Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
Chair.
Thank you. The staff will now make a brief presentation of the case.
Thank you. Tonight's the...
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, sir.
I think you'd want to enter into the record the posting log and mailing affidavit.
Thank you. I'll enter into the record the posting log and mailing affidavit. And now, I'll ask the staff for a presentation.
Okay. Thank you again. The applicant, Ralston Creek North, represented by James Driver, is requesting approval of an alternative sign program for the shops at Ralston Creek located at the northeast corner of Independence Street and Ralston Road. The alternative sign program is to address the needs of the future tenants within the 4.2 acre retail development, which includes attached wall signs for four multi-tenant buildings and three detached monument signs to be located along the Ralston Road and Independence Street frontage. The Land Development Code provides the opportunity for applicant who desires signage which does not strictly conform to the standards, requirements, and limitations of the Land Development Code to propose an alternative sign program for consideration of planning commission. The proposed ASP will establish what would be allowed for each tenant within an urban retail center. The property is designated as mixed-used area in the comprehensive plan and meets the Arvada Triangle Plan as well as the Ralston Creek Streetscape Design Guidelines that allow signage within the streetscape. Staff is recommending approval of the ASP based on the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a representative of the applicant present?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hi, Maureen Fair. I'm the Executive Director of the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, and this is an urban renewal project. And I just wanted to give you a little background as to how we got here today, so you see the vision that the authority is looking to achieve. So, the board has decided to create an image for the three shopping centers located in the vicinity of Independence and Ralston Road. So, this is where Kmart, King Supers, where the old Safeway is, where the Walmart's going in. So, that area right now doesn't really have an identity. It doesn't have a name. We kind of generically refer to it as the triangle area, but we decided that we wanted to give it an identity and give it a name and make it a special place. So, we have branded the area Ralston Creek. That is to take advantage of that beautiful creek, that amenity that runs to the north that a lot of people don't even know is there. So, we decided to draw attention to that and call those three shopping centers Ralston Creek. And in doing so, we are going to create a streetscape and signage that incorporates this idea, similar to what we did in Old Town. So, some of you I know are new to the planning commission, so may not realize, but what urban renewal did is we put in that streetscape that you see in Old Town, all those brick pavers, the trees, the signage, the flower pots. We also did the signage. So, there's two signs on Old Wadsworth right as you come in off of Ralston. You'll see there's Old Town signs. That was some of our branding. We also put two large monument signs on the bypass, ones in front of Lowe's and ones in front of Park Place, in order to let people who are going along the bypass know Old Town is this way. And so, what we're trying to do then is do something similar to this area, Ralston Creek. And so, we are in the process right now of putting some monument signs on the corners in front of where the Walmart is. There's going to be some Ralston Creek signs in front of the U.S. Bank and in front of the KFC. And Walmart has already incorporated this signage into their signs, and also the Auto Zone, the new Auto Zone, has incorporated this Ralston Creek signage. So, with that background, I want to turn it over to our developer, Jay Drever, so he can show you what the plans are for the shops at Ralston Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Mr. Drever, could you spell your last name and give us your address for the record, please?
Yes. D.R.E.V.E.R., 2140 South Clayton, Denver, Colorado, 80210.
Thank you.
Well, Maureen kind of laid out what we've been working on for about three years now, and we are now pretty far along in the project. If you're not familiar with the project, it's on the corner of Independence and Ralston, and it's about four, a little bit over four acres. The entire development's going to be a little bit over 14 acres. The balance of it, we are in the process of working on a plan for multifamily units. But I'm here today to talk about the shops at Ralston Creek and the signage that we are proposing through the Alternative Sign Program. Again, it's four acres. It's four buildings. You can see one, two, three, four buildings. If you drive by it today, those buildings are being erected, and pretty far along, we've been... We started construction in February. We'll be done with construction in September, and we'll be moving tenants in in January. We have quite a few prospective tenants that we're moving to lease right now. I've listed some of them up there, Tokyo Joe's, Five Guys, the Arvada Liquor Mart, which is currently on the site, and a host of others. A lot of them are national and regional retailers. So, I'm here today to talk about two things. One is the signage on the buildings. The current code doesn't quite meet what we need to do to appease these tenants and their needs, to get them visibility. The second is the monument signs, and I'll get into both of those now. So, the current code for your primary sign is not to exceed 60 square feet per elevation. Well, these are multi-tenant buildings, and so that would severely limit the size of each sign for each tenant along each side of the buildings. The secondary sign cannot exceed 48 square feet, so in a similar fashion, we simply cannot provide the kind of signage that these tenants require. The other part of it is the code does not allow signs to be 15 feet above adjacent grade. These buildings, the tallest point, are 25, so even if we were to adhere to that, we would be pretty much above our doors or a little bit lower. So, let's see, what else we want to talk about? And then, the other issue for us is this is a speculative property, so we don't know what tenant's going to go in what space. We have some idea at this point with seven tenants, but this property, we have another five or six tenants coming in, and so we can't come to you and say, "We need this specific thing in this specific space." And so, what we came up with was this concept of having a band around the buildings. Now, understand that this band is not the size of the signs. This band is where the signs can go. And then, within the band, we've set up other parameters to, I think, make all of us feel comfortable that they're not, that these tenants aren't going to fill the bands with multiple signs and signs that oversize for the property. So, what we're proposing is each tenant is limited to one sign per elevation, and that could be two signs for tenants there on the interior of the buildings, on the front and the back, and three signs for tenants there on the end caps. You'd have signs front, back, and on the ends. No single sign can exceed 60 square feet within the sign band. The sign band shall not exceed 19 feet above the height of the building. And then, we have some other features where the sign band must be 12 inches from architectural elements and 6 inches from the parapets. And then, we will limit it to cabinet and dimensional signs. Other types of signs like awnings, banners, painted signs will not be permitted. So, the dimensional signs are what most of our tenants are using now, and those are the three-dimensional block letter signs or perhaps their logo that you see around town. And then, for the illumination standards, they'll follow the current codes, so they'll be either externally or internally illuminated. And this is a depiction of what it might look like on a typical building for us, and we are in discussions with Five Guys and Tokyo Joe's, and the interior one is just fictitious that we made up. The second issue that we have is we have three monument signs that we're proposing. The current code only allows for one sign per 600 lineal square feet. Along Ralston Road, we have two very large buildings, which we believe both need monument signs, not overly large monument signs, but monument signs to accommodate the three to five tenants that will be in each of those buildings. And current code right now is maximum sign area can be up to 125 square feet, maximum height of 12 feet, and it needs to be set back from a sidewalk by four feet, and it must be surrounded by landscape by four feet. If you can see up there, you've got 1A, 1B, and 1C. Those are the proposed locations of the monument signs that we'd like to erect. 2A and 2B are, we just put them up there to show that there will be some signs that are on a wall that say Ralston Creek, and those are really something that we put together for Aura and their needs to kind of give the area some definition, but they do not say shops at Ralston Creek. It just says Ralston Creek. This is the proposed monument signs. All three of them will be identical. Like I said before, right now, code allows for 12 feet in height. These signs are 4 feet 11 and 1/2 inches, and they're 48 square feet, and that includes the Ralston Creek. You can see that they've been designed to match what the rest of the area has with some of the leaves and other features. And this sign would be for the tenants within the buildings next to them. We also have an issue in that because we were creating a very compact urban feel, we don't have as much space as we would like to have four feet surrounding each of the signs of landscape and not four feet from the sidewalk. So, what we proposed is we actually were on the sidewalk. We moved the sign one foot back, and we have landscape about three feet on the west side and the east side of the signs on Ralston, and so that would also be something that we were asking, or we were proposing. So, in summary, what we would ask for is an additional detached sign along Ralston Road and then require the required four-foot setback from the sidewalk, and then modify the four feet of permeable landscape around the sign, adjacent sign, for the monuments. And then, I think it was important that there's no known easements that will affect these signs and nothing that we know will be happening that'll affect these signs. So, that is our proposal.
Thank you very much. It's time for comments from the public.
Okay.
And then, we'll move forward with questions. I'll now open the hearing for comments from the public. First, those in favor of the application? Anyone? Anyone wish to speak against the application? None? Awesome. So, there'll be no rebuttal then, so let's see. We will then close the public comment period and invite questions from members of the Mr. Hannan?
This question is for staff. The one-foot setback from the sidewalk, is that sufficient for safety?
Yes, staff didn't review it in terms of accessibility for the pedestrian along that edge. It is setback one. We originally talked about a two-feet setback further, but that would also impact the streetscape that was being proposed on that edge, and we felt that the one feet, again, particularly on that access drive, though, that is really just for the pedestrian that would be going there more than likely would be the people going into the shops or the main street is Holland, where the pedestrian and also the bike route is, and then along Ralston Road. But the sidewalks are eight feet wide along that 24-foot drive, and I think John could probably speak more to it, but Ralston Road, that sidewalk is 10 feet. Independence is eight feet. So, it's a wide sidewalk versus the typical four to five feet that we have in our neighborhood. So, we feel that is adequate.
Excellent. Thank you. One more question for staff. When we approved this these many months ago, we had discussion about some sort of signage or indication to celebrate the history of the area where the old Stagecoach Route used to be. Has there been discussion about that?
Staff hasn't had that issue.
Okay.
I'm not sure if Aura has. Again, the theme that's been established is with the Ralston Creek logo.
Right.
And so, that's something that I think has been in place for a while, and I think Maureen may be able to answer that in terms of any additional integration with the cultural stuff.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, another question for staff. So, the sidewalks are, again, they're seven feet along Ralston Road and eight feet along Independence?
10 feet along Ralston Road.
10 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And eight feet on Independence. So, they are wider. The whole plan was, this was supposed to be pedestrian-oriented.
Right.
So, the sidewalks are much larger. As well as on Independence, there is a plaza on that edge directly south of where the sign is going to be, and so it's incorporated within that plaza area. So, yes, staff is very comfortable that it is an appropriate location.
Okay. It appeared that they were smaller in the plans that I had, but I'm glad that they're as wide as the multi-use trails that we typically put into our parks and other places. And there is no separation between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. Is that correct? The sidewalk goes right up to the curb and gutter?
So, actually, the sidewalk is buffered from the street. There is a six-foot landscape strip along Ralston Road, so it's a total of 16 feet from the curb to the building frontage and that location.
Okay. That's what I was reading, is the sidewalk, the six-foot buffer, so I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Chair. My question's for the applicant, and it regards the landscape around these signs. What's planted in that one-foot buffer area that's around the sign there?
That's grass.
So, just a grass? Okay. Strips like that tend to have some issue. I wonder if there's some consideration to that one-foot strip? I mean, it could be gravel or something. That's just the first comment. And the other one is, there's a tree there. It looks like if that's, I'm reading this correctly in scale, that's maybe two foot or less away from the sign. And the issue that I have with that is I'm looking at the footing detail, and it looks like it goes down about three feet. I don't know if you're going to be able to get a root ball next to this sign. I just, I'm looking at the tree.
It's a good question. We had to move landscaping around when we moved the sign over one foot, and so we did shuffle some things around. I agree with you, when we're actually putting shovels in the ground, that might feel a little bit different, but we do intend to keep as much, or keep the green, the amount of green space there. We just might have to move it around once we get to the point where we're actually digging.
Okay. That's all. Any further questions? If not, the chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that ASP 2017-0001, the Shops at Ralston Creek Alternative Sign Program located at 9535 West 58th Avenue, be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages 8 and 9 of the staff report.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all members, please vote. There are seven yeses and zero no's, so that is approved. Thank you very much. Okay. The next case we'll hear is Trinity Storage Annexation Number One. Staff, are there any posting or notification requirements?
There are actually three parts to this application.
Very good. So, we have annexation one, annexation two, and the PDP. Is that correct?
And the rezoning.
And the rezoning, so we have four parts.
Yes, there were three forms of notification required, posting in the newspaper, which was accomplished by the city, posting on the site, a sign on the site, and written notice to property owners within 400 feet. We do have the affidavit of mailing and the signed notice, and they are in order.
Thank you very much. The staff report, posting log, and affidavit of mailing are made a permanent part of the record, and now the staff will give us a brief presentation of the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting annexation of approximately 10.7 acres of property, which includes State Highway 72, approval of a rezoning from Jefferson County SR2 to City of Arvada, PUD, BP zoning, and a preliminary development plan for a commercial development that includes a self-storage facility on approximately 2.7 acres of the site. The project is proposed to include a new public street on the east side of the property with access to State Highway 72. The self-storage facility would be accessed via this new street. The three-story storage building would be located on the southern portion of the site. The northern lot is proposed for future development of either office or some other type of commercial use at a future date, and that will require a separate preliminary development plan at that time. The applicant has requested two modifications from development standards to allow for the western property buffer to be treated as a non-residential buffer and to eliminate fencing along the southern property line. Staff has analyzed the modifications and found them to be acceptable as detailed in the staff report. With the two exceptions of the modifications, staff has determined that the facility complies with the requirements of the Land Development Code, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions identified in the staff report.
Thank you very much. Is there a representative of the applicant present? Would you please step to the podium and state your name and spell it for the record, and also provide us your address?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Paul Duncan. My address is 6275 Joyce Drive, Arvada, Colorado, 80403.
Please proceed.
I'm proud to call Arvada home. My family and I located here in 1988. My children are all graduates of Arvada Public Schools. I'm a local business owner and one of the founding members of the consulting firm that moved and relocated into Arvada in 2004. In 2015, my company was honored to be named a Colorado Company to Watch. Our company's culture believes in optimism, community, integrity, respect, and optimism. I'm an active member of the Arvada Economic Development Association, having served the community for over eight years in that capacity in various roles. Location, Y Arvada. Having almost 30 years of roots in Arvada as my home. My business is an end user of storage, and I've experienced storage on a personal level for use myself and on multiple different occasions. There's a variety of need for different storage product, as prior to this year, the last one built in the west Arvada area was 1998. The northwest area, District 7, is one of the city's highest-growth areas with Candellas and Leiden Rock. The traffic counts now number around 18,000 cars per day at Indiana and Highway 72. The project viability, we had commissioned a feasibility study to be performed. My favorite saying that came out of meeting Joe Beth with DSI was, "We have become Starbucks Nation. No one wants to drive too far for their coffee nor for their storage." Twenty years ago, the baseline was a 10-mile radius for storage. Today, that's down to three miles. DSI stated in November 2016 a study that the market is exceptional within the three-mile radius with only two existing competitors with an average occupancy of 99% and only eight units available. And 90% of the existing storage is exterior, non-climate controlled. Today, the occupancy levels of those two surroundings facilities are 96.3% for the Apollo one to the west of the site, and the public storage at 64th and Eldridge is at 95.8%. Our user base consists of businesses, residential, and multifamily in transit. The current market demand determined by DSI in this area currently shows this area is well underserved in the three-mile radius. With the two existing competitors, there's 117,000 square feet available in the market. That translates to a market supply of 3.5 square feet per person in a primary three-mile market area. The national average is 7.3 over twice that number. The Colorado average per square foot is around nine, so we're well underneath any of those availabilities. Trinity will help fulfill that supply for the demand that's created by the anticipated population growth in those two areas. Our operations for this modern facility, there'll be no onsite live-in manager. They'll only be present during operating hours, and we're currently in a process And we're currently in the process of selecting a highly qualified operations company that does this throughout the nation. The vision for a Class A facility that meets and exceeds the city's new classification for public storage in a PUD BP zoning. This property and this project is only possible due to Arvada Planning and Zoning's vision to urbanize storage into a smaller footprint for better land use and blend in with the community for mixed use. This project, as you will see from our second presenter, is a masterful blend of working into that mixed use and blending into the community. With that, I'd like to introduce Mark Delgado with DCB.
Mr. Delgado, please spell your last name and give us your address for the record.
Sure. One second here. D E L G A D O. My address is 680 South Harrison Street, Denver, Colorado, 80209.
Thank you.
As Paul mentioned, I'm with DCB Construction. I'm an architect, and I'm joined by the rest of our design team, including our civil engineers. So should any questions come up at the end of the presentation, our whole team's available to speak regarding their disciplines. I think it's important to note, as Paul was alluding to, we made self-storage one of our sort of niche markets probably about eight years ago. Over the past five years, I'd say about 90% of the facilities we design and build are multi-story. So it is refreshing to see the City of Arvada's standards implementing and enforcing a multi-story component which responds to site constraints, increasing land costs, and it just generally results in a more efficient site design compared to the traditional facilities of the single-story type that are primarily drive-up garage doors, short roofs. So we'd like to start the presentation just by really briefly touching on what we're asking for and what this application's all about. So to get you all up to speed, the annexation piece, the applicant is requesting annexation into the City of Arvada. We're well into this process now in regards to working with Jefferson County and looking at all the hurdles and making sure that the project meets all the rules and regulation, regulations pertaining to annexations, including the 1/6th continuity. Jefferson County's Board of County Commissioners approved the annexation petition on May 30th of this year. Our second request is the rezone piece and with that, the existing zone SR2 in the county, we worked with planning to establish the new zoning would be, if approved, would be a PUD BP, which is part of the mixed use, which falls into a category that makes it viable for, in the mixed-use area of the comp plan, which is where this is located. So we'll go through a few maps and just contextual maps related to the site and the city limits and the comprehensive plan. Finally, we'll touch on the vision that Paul alluded to, which is the idea of a new mixed-use development. We have about five and a half acres of land. The idea is that Phase One would, would provide all the infrastructure, including the building, the self-storage building, which is 100, there's actually a typo there. It's actually 117,000 square foot Class A self-storage facility, including the Phase One PDP piece also includes right-of-way dedication to accommodate C dot right-of-way improvements, as well as a new street infrastructure on the east side of the property that we've collaborated on with the city on their, at their request. And finally, Phase Two, which is not part of this PDP, relates to a future commercial development that fits into the PUD BP land use. Briefly, the left side is simply an excerpt from the staff report regarding the annexation approval criteria and action items on our end. And as I mentioned, we have our engineering team available to answer any questions regarding the annexation process. And just yesterday, the annexation was received by Arvada City Council, the petition, so that step has also been, been taken care of. This exhibit identifies the two annexations combined. Annexation one is the yellow hatch and annexation two is the yellow hatch, or I'm sorry, is the solid yellow element. And regarding the rezone, again, on the left is a staff report identifying that we've met all the findings. But what we'd like to do is just show a few maps to show how the site is situated in the context of the city, city limits, and where it sits in the comprehensive plan. And we also would like to reiterate that self-storage is a neighborhood service amenity. And as Paul mentioned, the feasibility, the feasibility analysis prepared by the third-party consultant identified a definite need for this product in this particular area. So the yellow hatch here, this is a map of Arvada's city limits. So you can see where our flagpole annexation, how it's situated, and you'll see that it's surrounded by the City of Arvada, limits on all four sides. Within the comprehensive plan, the area is designated as mixed use, and the PUD BP allows for a variety of uses, including the proposed self-storage along with a commercial development that would occur on the north side of the lot. And just to kind of reinforce a few items as relates to the comprehensive plan and Policy L 2.1, which is about complete community. Again, this, this project, this, this use is, is a neighborhood service amenity, and with the new standards adopted by the city, I believe it was July of last year, the architecture, the vision, these projects really are able to be compatible with neighborhoods compared to a traditional facility. The following is an excerpt from the third-party feasibility study prepared by DSI in November of 2016, which states, "The market is exceptional for the three-mile market with two existing facilities that have an occupancy rate of 99.3% with only eight units available." And another important fact here, I mean, obviously, the market is underserved, but it's only, of those units, only 90% of those units are actually climate-controlled. So that further increases the actual need for what this facility is bringing to the area, which is a fully environmentally controlled facility. So there's a lot of, there's a differentiating product also compared to those other two facilities. Finally, this, the facility would not only serve residential users, but the DSI estimates about 20% of the users will come from local businesses as well. Finally, the last part of the presentation here, we'd like to touch on the PDP, the actual vision now, and what we're trying to achieve. The project, as mentioned, complies with the recently adopted self-storage standards, which we believe will result in an extremely high-quality design, as well as a more efficient design. So a traditional facility of equivalent rentable area would require probably double the lot size, but by adopting, by working with the city with their standards, that site usable areas cut in half or possibly even more. And the idea, when we get into the site design, is the Phase One self-storage will be a catalyst for future development, basically taking a backseat to showcase the commercial use, which is situated fronting Highway 72. In addition, Phase One includes the infrastructural improvements that could also be a boon for future development, not just on this property, but for surrounding properties. The minimum open space requirement has been exceeded by more than 50%. And it's important to note that the, with the existing residential developments surrounding the property, self-storage is probably the quietest use you can have. There's about 25 to 30 trips generated per day. And self-storage is generally, whether it's single-story or multi-story, serves as a, as an excellent buffer between high-intensity residential uses, I'm sorry, high-intensity commercial uses and residential uses. And just to kind of go back on one of Rob's points on our, regarding our approval criteria. So we worked with the planning department to establish buffer zones against the existing residential properties, and we actually are increasing those standards by doubling them out a masonry typically required under a Type B buffer. Usually, it's a masonry column every 120 feet. We're actually proposing a masonry buffer every 50 feet. And on the south property, that, I guess you'd call it modification request, we're not proposing no fence. We're just proposing a, like a ornamental metal kind of picket fence. So we're not, not going to have a fence. This site's going to be completely secured, so. So here's an overall kind of neighborhood map showing Phase One to the south and the future Phase Two to the north. When we first sat down with the city, we thought we'd make it real easy and pull a little access. There's an existing shared access on the north side of the property that serves about five, five properties adjacent to, to the subject lot. And through review and analysis with the city's engineering department, it was determined that it wasn't going to be quite that easy. So essentially, what the city requested and what C dot agreed to is a new north-south access that will serve, and that's the orange north and south piece, that would be intended to alleviate possible, the concern basically for not using the existing shared access is that there'd be stacking up along Highway 72, and so it was a safety issue. And so we agreed that it was probably the best thing to do, even though it was, there is obviously a financial burden with creating the new street infrastructure for that. But as far as access is concerned, that the, there's a new street extension on the east side of the property, a future access easement in the middle of the property to serve the property directly to the west. And then on the north, there's C dot right-of-way improvements. And the blue lines there indicate a future vision by the city. It's not part of our project, but how the rest of the sites there could potentially feed onto this. There's an existing right-of-way on the south edge of all of those properties, and the idea would be to utilize those. But that's not part of our project. It's just shown for reference purposes. Just as far as site context, there's an elevated berm to the south of the property that kind of divides our site and the rest of the sites to the north from the residential development from the, to the south. Looking now more in-depth at the actual site layout, you can see the, the new street improvements to the east, C dot right-of-way improvements to the north. Again, efficient site design, the multi-story enables us to be more efficient, allowing a future commercial development to occur on the north side of the property. We've worked with the city on the, you can see the landscaping treatments on the west and south. The south has, even though there's a big giant railroad berm there, it's been determined that's residential, so we're treating it like residential. And there's enhanced buffering requirements there as well. The open space, largely due to the pond, is exceeded by 50%, but also it's worth noting that that Phase Two development at 1.95 acres will be highly efficient because the pond at the south is designed to accommodate flows from both Phase One and Two development. We have done initial lighting studies, and we'll ensure that the lighting criteria will be in compliance with LZ3, I believe is our designation for lighting requirements in this area. And we've also collaborated with Arvada Fire to ensure adequate, adequate fire protection facilities are provided throughout the facility, and then we also have two fire hydrants. Quickly, on access, there is a single, intended to be a single shared curb cut for both projects. So it kind of stubs out and then serves Phase One there, and with a future development would, would ideally utilize that same curb cut. The site as regards to safety, site lighting is going to be provided throughout the facility to discourage suspicious activity while still meeting the minimum lighting or maximum lighting requirements. The facility will have 24-hour video surveillance, both interior and exterior. And this, the facility will be secured at the perimeter fence, and there'll be two electronic access points. And there will also be keypad access at the covered loading area of the multi-story building, where basically all the customers enter the facility. So going back to the vision and meeting the minimum standards and, and the architectural requirements, the city adopted some fairly comprehensive standards in regards to corner elements, wall articulation, changing up materials, the use of masonry. And so this, these drawings illustrate both a response to those, to that criteria. And the idea here is to really use the masonry as kind of anchor pieces at the corner elements while having, having some relief with the lighter-colored stucco. And then you have some accent composite architectural materials, architectural metals as well with the warm grays and the warm blue colors there. The facility is designed with a small amount, I'd say probably 5% of the units are, are accessed from the exterior. And the city's adopted self-storage standards provides specific provisions for allowing doors facing the exterior where you're not facing a public right-of-way, or if there's proper screening provided, be it a 50-foot setback with a fence and screening or other criteria. The next image kind of demonstrates on that, this is looking at the northwest corner of the building. So to the right would be a residential property, and you could see that the, the masonry posts, the solid fencing, along with the landscaping, were raised up a little bit so you can see the top of those doors. But the idea here is the, we're doing, we're accomplishing what the goals were with the intent of buffering those doors from the adjacent properties, specifically the residential properties. And finally, this, this is a sort of a perspective rendering, looking at kind of the main focal point of what the, the architectural standards adopted by the city asks for a lot of glass and a lot of transparency and a tower-like, I guess they call it a primary focal point element at the corner of the building that equals about 30, I believe it's 30% of the, of the building footprint. And so that's sort of, that, that's the kind of the design intent behind that corner element there, and the glass and the roof overhangs and the wall articulation. So we have, that concludes our presentation. We have, again, our, the developer and our civil engineers onboard to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. We'll have comments from the public, and then we'll have questions for you, I'm sure.
Thank you. Yep.
I will now open the hearing for comments from the public. First, those who are in favor of the application. Please come to the podium. Please give us your name and spell it and address for the record.
My name is Esther Kettering. That is E S T H E R. Kettering is K E T T E R I N G. I'm with Cushman &amp; Wakefield. My address is 5080 Utica Street in Denver, and my office is at 1401 Lawrence Street in downtown Denver. I represent the applicant in the acquisition of the property, and I would like to address the needs of business for self-storage, because I think we have changing demographics in the population, as well as changing in the nature of business and how business is done that is promoting growth in this need for self-storage. So first of all, there is a need and a desire for climate-controlled and enhanced electronic security in self-storage facilities, both on the personal level and on the business level. On the demographic side, there are extended families, there are mobile On the demographic side, there are extended families, there are mobile families, there are young adults that go off to college then come back. There are more young adults living at home right now than have in the past for a period of time, and that creates a need for storage. Multifamily development has also driven this need, and then also part of the population, the elders are downsizing, they want to put stuff in storage. But on a business side, we're seeing more and more need from independent businesses for self-storage. Law firms, professional firms, they have need for record storage. Professional firms like architecture engineers, they need to keep their records for a certain number of years, and not everything can be put on a disc. We see a lot of need in the nonprofit sector, businesses, nonprofit businesses that have publication materials that are only used at certain times of the year, or promotional materials, for example, for a, a run or a race where they need race bibs and t-shirts and whatnot, or a point-of-sale display or display for a museum. What this does is it offers a business a right-sized amount of warehouse. Anecdotally, I got a call recently from a longstanding Arvada business, a retailer, and they called me because they wanted to know if they were paying the right price for warehouse space given the fact that they were in self-storage. And when I did the math for them, I said, you know what? Your, your use fluctuates seasonally from about a 2,000 square foot use to a 4,000 square foot use, determining on the, depending on the time of year and where they are in the season of their sales. And I said, you know, you're paying not any more than you would in a multi-tenant industrial building, maybe a little more, but you're getting that flexibility. And for someone to go sign a three-year lease as a retailer in a static, traditional, flex facility is, it could be a hardship on them because they end up with excess space at certain times of the year, and then if they need to downsize or grow, it's just a very rigid environment. So, the right sizing is an issue. The steady job growth that we see in our community is also driving the need for storage because as businesses who are in flex or office space fill that space with people, they need to put their stuff someplace else that's in a more flexible storage environment. And then I think probably one of the biggest categories is the e-commerce entities, the Etsy folks and the eBayers and the Mary Kay salespeople, they need a small space, possibly a tiny space, 600 or 800 square feet or even less potentially, to store their goods. And again, anecdotally, when you go to the post office, if any of us ever do, I, I do, you often see someone in line ahead of you with 20 little boxes, and maybe they're making earrings or shipping out their, whatever they do. And they need this storage space, and these are the people that we see using this type of space from a business point of view. We are in an environment of, of high demand, medium growth in, in this type of product, especially in this northwest quadrant of the Denver metropolitan area. We see vacancies going down and rents going up, and introduction of new product to this market is a natural, the natural progression of events in an economy like this. So, I would promote approval of this project as long as it's in conformance with the city codes, and I think my client has made an effort to do that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? Sir, please give us your name and spell it and-
Sure.
-for the record, and then your address, please.
My name is Robert Hellrunge, H.E.L.L.R.U.N.G. My address is 13862 West 64th Place in Arvada, 80004. So I live in the Hillcrest subdivision, which is right between Eldridge and DeFrane. And at Eldridge and 64th is where there is a public storage operation now. We were the original owners of the home, we've been there for 23, 24 years now. We were there before the public storage went in, and we have, in, in all these years, have had no issues with any noise or commotion or, you know, unruliness or traffic or anything like that. So, I know there may be some kind of concern of that for residential areas, but I say it, my house is about 300 to 350 feet from the property, and there's, you know, no, not a whole lot of noise and loud commotion, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hellrunge.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of the application? Sir, please come to the podium. Please give us your name and address and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Jim Paprocki, it's P.A.P.R.O.C.K.I. My address is 15150 Highway 72. One thing is, is the access they're talking about shares all five lots, and I don't see in their pictures of them being able to access all five lots. One, as my concern is, access to my house. I will have to share the access to this property to get to my house. Currently, it's under five ownerships, have easement agreement across there, and the five owners are responsible for that access point. Now it's going to go from residential to commercial. And without redoing this agreement, I don't think it's fair for me to have to share in their snow removal costs or their maintenance cost of this, of this access point. Has not been addressed. Number two, I still haven't heard, Jefferson County last month has approved a storage unit to the east of here. It's a 600 garage units with a three-story controlled building in front. That has been approved, they're going forward through it. So now, we're going to have another storage unit right next to it. So it's like having two McDonald's right next to each other. I don't think anybody's mentioned any of that. There is somebody here from the other storage unit, I know, so they can speak on behalf of, of what's going on, if I'm not stating it right.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Please give us your name and address and spell your last name for the record.
Dennis Weingardt, 2210 Vance Street, and it's W.E.I.N.G.A.R.D.T., and that's Lakewood, Colorado.
Thank you.
Of course, my wife and I bought our property, which by the way is right across the street from this unit, for residential purposes, so we're not excited about the commercial trend or the reality going on here. We would like to build a house in that area, and for sure, we would like to be able to access our property. I see that the Highway 72 is being annexed by the city of Arvada. How, what, how does that affect my access if we're not a part of the Arvada city? What restrictions are going to be placed upon my access? Will there be requirements for you to make a payment to get to my property? Is somebody going to try to restrict my use of the road in some manner? I'm concerned about that, notwithstanding the fact that I'm not happy with the whole project, but even given that the project goes through, that is my major concern. So, I think we need to, if this is approved, add requirement that existing owners, if they're not getting services from the city of Arvada, be protected, grandfathered, access to our properties, no restrictions. So, and that's, that's all I've got to say right now.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Sir, please come to the podium, give us your name and address and spell your last name for the record.
Yes, my name is Bruce Roberts, that's R.O.B.E.R.T.S. My address is 15650 Highway 72, just at the end of that property, at the end of the section that's going to be, of Highway 72 that would be annexed into the city. Two primary concerns that we've always raised about, about this is the sort of haphazard way in which this is being developed and without any cooperation or seeming any cooperation or coordination with the county. You have a relatively small section, which both the county and the city have in their long-term plans listed as being some sort of commercial development. But it seems to be the approach of the city of Arvada is to take whatever little piece you can get, wherever you can get it, stick whatever fits in there, and then defer to some other future time, the, the plans for what you're going to do with the remainder of the property. This is a large property that would be well-suited for a substantial development, that the city is now going to be allowing a small storage unit to be placed directly in the middle of that, effectively making two small parcels, each containing two current residences, that would be deferred for some future use. So, I think there's a basic concern in terms of the way the county is, the city and the county are working together to do their planning. There seems to be very little coordination and very little long-term thought as to what is actually going to be done with this sort of a parcel. It's a parcel which is now going to be fragmented, making it harder and more difficult, significantly more difficult for any future developer to have any significant development or any major development which might have long-term better revenue capability for the city of Arvada. Traffic is considered to be a continuing issue. Yes, traffic continues to be much worse on that. That area where that is currently has a 60 mile an hour state speed limit. And yesterday, trying to pull into my driveway, I had somebody pass me at 70 miles an hour directly in front of that particular access point. When the highway closes, everything backs up going down because Highway 93 closes. So there's significant traffic there, the traffic is getting worse. It used to be that you could turn into one of those properties and there would, you would wait for one or two cars. Now it's 10, 12, 15 cars that you're waiting for to get through there. The traffic isn't going to support that. We used to take horse trailers in and out of there. I will, would not attempt to make a turn off that highway with a horse trailer because of the way the traffic works, and people going to storage units may have storage, may have trailers and other things. It is definitely hazardous to be making turns off of there without significant traffic modifications and mitigations. So, if the city is going to consider doing this, we strongly consider that you look at your long-term plan, that we look at traffic, that at the very least, throughout the entire area annexed by the city, that that be, that, that area be reduced, the speed limit be restricted to the maximum speed limits or to the prevailing speed limits within the city of Arvada, instead of allowing this sort of facility to go in where you've got a 55 or 60 mile an hour speed limit, very little mitigation, and a high amount of traffic with people trying to move in and out. It's not well-suited for both residential and commercial. So we strongly consider that you rethink this particular application until the city and the county can come to grips with who's going to be responsible for this area, long-term, what the long-term plan is and what the long-term impact is, instead of looking at one short-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further people that wish to speak in opposition? Please give us your name and address and spell your last name for the record.
John King, K.I.N.G., 7620 Frontier Circle, Morrison, 80465. This is a little confusing for me in that we have the property next door under contract, we have had for a year and a half, to the east. We're closing July 31st. January 19th of last year, I met with city staff, and it was, I guess, an informal pre-app meeting. And I was very quickly told that I need not apply because the city typically did not do flagpole annexations. And there was no water available, so not only did the city not want to annex me, they couldn't legally do so. So at that point, we went to Jefferson County, and we were able to obtain water service from Rawson Valley Water and Sand District. And so we pursued our development through Jefferson County. A month ago, we got approved, and the county commissioners approved our PD zoning to allow for self-storage. So, we're currently preparing our site development plan for the county. Excuse me. So, the, the proposal here kind of came out of nowhere, and we found out about it from Jefferson County staff as they were reviewing our rezoning application. So, then we dug into it, we actually met with some city staff, and they urged us to try to cooperate with this development, to see if there's something we could do together on this access. You know, we, we considered that, and we, we have met with Mr. Duncan, and, and essentially, my partner was part of those meetings, I was not. He was told that, you know, if we were to cooperate, there'd be no cost, no land-taking for us, you know? And that's just not what this shows. This, this plan shows at some point in the future us having a dedicate right-of-way to the city, and then our access would be dictated into that public, future public street. So, we, to go back to the, the easement and the access, the existing access right now by this development is being required to be removed. Right now, it would be removed without my permission as property owner or any of the other property owners that I know of. The plan requires grading on our property, again, without our permission. And the proposed storm sewer along Highway 72 could create some drains problems for us, but I'm sure those could be somewhat mitigated. But, the, we feel like the, this whole idea of the, the traffic light being there is, is premature. Our existing access fits our needs nicely, and it most likely could fit the needs of a self-storage, another self-storage facility, given the traffic, the low traffic that we both would generate. Obviously, that would change with an office building or with the other properties that, you know, will most likely come in as commercial between there and Indiana and on the other side of the street. But we don't really know if this is the best location for the future. Just along the south side of Highway 72, east of our property, there's 30 acres vacant land except for two houses, but if it's to be developed commercial, it would be considered vacant land at this point. There's only 12 acres to the west of the Trinity property, and two of those parcels that are part of that 12 acres do have their residents on them and they have their own access to Highway 72. We could make a point that maybe the traffic light, if there is a future traffic light, 10 years from now or whatever, could easily be on our east property line. It could be put there and still meet CDOT's minimum requirements for spacing between traffic lights at Indiana and over here. So, that hasn't really been thought out that well, I don't believe. So, and the, at the, the county commissioners' hearing for the annexation, I believe that the, the civil engineering consultant kind of conveyed the idea that the property owners had been contacted along this easement, and that this was just a formality. Well, I don't- Well, I don't, I don't plan to sign anything that's going to remove that, that access that, that is on my property, but also shared by the other property owners. And, you know, I don't know how to get around that issue, but, and I'm not saying I'm here necessarily to oppose the development, per se, the use, I'll say the use, but the plan, the way it is now, it just dictates what I do with my property, which is not inside the city limits of Arvada. As far as, you know, I'm not here to try to, you know, run off a competitor, market forces, marketing forces, let it, let it go, that's fine. And like I said, they would have access to this same existing asphalt driveway as we do and the other property owners do. So I'm really here to express my desire to keep the existing driveway and not have it forcibly removed. And also, I'm just a little disappointed how this went on with the city. I, I, through, the county staff said that they were told that we didn't want to annex into Arvada, Arvada wanted to annex us, seeming, making us look like we were being uncooperative. Well, I just told you, we, we had no choice to begin with, and were basically told to go away, and we were successful in Jefferson County. But the main thing is, I would love to see a way to continue to use that existing driveway and not go through all these future plans that would actually impact maybe between the north and south side of Highway 72, as many as 19, 20 property owners. And who knows how long this is going to take to develop? With Candell's having so much commercial ground, now the King Supra's going up there, I think development pressure on this corner has gone way down in the last couple of years. That's certainly my opinion. But, again, the, the main thing is, I, I don't want to have my access forcibly removed. And there is a way, given the uses of this property, Trinity's, and ours next door together, there's still no, not enough traffic generation to keep that access from being used successfully for both our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, would the applicant like an opportunity for rebuttal? Mr. Duncan? Mr. Delgado?
It sounds like there's a lot regarding access and traffic discussed by Mr. Pabroki, Dennis Bruce, and John there. I'd like to touch on just a few points other than that specific access, and then perhaps turn it over to the city engineering department who sort of initiated these requests, and which, which we agreed made, made sense, but perhaps we can do that after we're done addressing some of these other concerns regarding the easement, if that's okay. So, in response to Mr. Pabroki, we're not changing the delineation of the act, of the actual shared easement to the north, nor are we trying to adjust any maintenance agreements. So the actual, if we flip there to the, the easement and the easement arrangements, the way we have it set up would not change. The only area where we're actually modifying grade is within that access easement to maintain that easement and that access to the north. So that's a key point, is that we're not trying to, with this project, change what currently exists and how the current residents in Jefferson County are accessing their property. Another point to make is that, as far as future access along the portion of road that's going to be annexed, it's, we've met with both CDOT, the city, and finally, our last meeting, CDOT, the city, and the county, who all agree with this access point. And it's been determined that CDOT is the issuing authority on access on Highway 72, not the city, unless the city specifically requests to have that ability. And, and we were told by the city planner and engineer that they would not be making that request. There was another comment in regards to Jefferson County's input. As I mentioned, they were part of the referral process, and we have sat down with them to review exactly what is depicted on the PDP. I think it'd be good, perhaps, to talk about the stacking and the queuing, so I'll turn it, turn it over to our civil engineer for those, for that response.
Sir, could you please give us your name and address and spell your last name for the record?
Sure, my name is Todd Lyon. My address is 9956 West 87th Place, Arvada 8005, with an extra zero in the middle there. So, regarding this access point, like, like Mark said, when we originally took a look at the site, we had intended to use the existing access point. We met with the city, we met with CDOT. The city had indicated a desire to have a shared access point between this lot and the adjacent property. And one of, one of the reasons that, that that actually, you know, really clicked with us as well, is what the city's looking to do is create more of an access grid for the entire block from this site to, towards the east to Indiana. And as you get more development in this area beyond just the storage unit we're talking about right now, you're going to have traffic queuing up to get onto Highway 72. The closer you make the connection point from that, that existing access easement that's serving as a frontage road for the five properties there, the, the more difficult that stacking becomes for traffic to get onto and off of Highway 72. So by putting a public road coming down south off of Highway 72, it provides room for cars to stack, to back up to either access Highway 72 or get off of Highway 72. And I think, maybe I could just address a couple of the off-site improvements that were brought up. We, we do not intend to grade off-site, with the exception of providing access within the access easement, so essentially providing a connection from our current, or from the, the proposed public roadway to the properties that are already served by that access road. So, outside of that, we, we do not intend to utilize other properties to develop this property. Any other concerns we need to add?
There was brought up about the safety with high-speed cars, 65, 70 miles an hour along Highway 72. With the improved access, Trinity is required to put in a turn lane to, from eastbound to westbound, to make that left-hand turn across into the area. The D cell and XL lanes have to be extended also. And if I'm correct from talking with Mr. King's partner, Jeff Kinder, I think they were required to put a turn lane in too. I'm not 100% sure of that, but that's what I believe Mr. Kinder explained to me. So, in regard to Mr. King talking about the access, we know we need to work this out. I talked with Mr. Kinder in late March over a phone call. We agreed to follow up and talk later in April, which we did. We actually physically met on June 2nd to walk through what we each saw as far as access and how that would work. We obviously have different opinions in that access, so it will ultimately get worked out through the FTP process that we have to address with that adjacent property development, meeting with CDOT, the city and the county, to get that all worked out. So, we're happily to, to work with the adjacent property owners, or the new ones, I should say, in trying to make that access. We're certainly not denying any access in there, that's, that would be incorrect. The, we can't remove an access without approval of a higher authority, too.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the, I'll close the public input portion of the hearing, and now open the hearing to discussion and questions from members of the planning commission. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I was looking at, I mean, I was listening regarding the feasibility study, and in fact, I think the study was done last November, about what was in vicinity in multiple, several miles, and maybe a couple storage units. I do recall, we approved one on Indiana, and I believe it's being built right now. And then, as a gentleman has suggested, there's the one just east of the property that was approved by Jefferson County as well. So, obviously, those weren't put into your, the feasibility study, but, because they're fairly new or coming on board.
So, yes, the 69th and Indiana property, that is right at the three-mile radius, as you, if you see that up there, it's a yellow dot right down there, that's, pardon me, at the two-mile radius. So, in the feasibility study for that, for the future properties coming in outside the two existing properties, that one is approximately 60,000 square feet, rentable square feet. So 30,000 of that was attributed to the study for, with the development down the road. That would then change the square footage to about five square feet with that addition in there. With the recent addition of the rezoning application and approval to C1 in the county, with the exception of self-storage, as Mr. King explained, talking with Jeff and looking at feasibility study, that takes it up to about seven square feet, which is what the national average is, and is still below the Colorado average. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, it is, thank you. I do have another question, and it was regarding the traffic study. On page seven of the staff report, it indicates that the Trinity storage will generate about 275 a daily trips, is that correct? I mean, 15, with 15 trips occurring during the morning peak and 29 during the afternoon. So, I guess, I thought what was stated earlier was like, it was considerably less, and so, could you just clarify that, please?
Yeah, there's generally, there's actual sort of, the criteria for the traffic generators that we have to use for traffic reports, and no major triggers occurred with that traffic report. So my number of 25 to 30 daily trips actually refers to actual statistics based on facilities. So, there's a discrepancy with that. So if you, you could also refer to that traffic study if you'd like, it's more aggressive, but it's still far below what any other typical retail or commercial facility would generate of this size, so. But, I could send, send you the statistics if you needed.
No, thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Ms. Wolfsohn?
Thank you, Chair. My question is for staff. I'm wondering if city staff coordinated at all with CDOT or looked at the access point for this property, as it relates to properties, you know, adjacent or on the other side of the street, with separation distances and that kind of thing?
Yes, that's correct. We did discuss this access with CDOT, and CDOT is authority in terms of issuing an access permit for any existing or any new access points to and from the properties. With the discussions, we were trying to coordinate basically the future of the site, and trying to identify how perhaps shared access between multiple property owners with a future traffic signal can also help in terms of costs and the growth in the area. In fact, the traffic study that we conducted does look at the entirety of the site, in addition to just the site's generated traffic. All that was shared with CDOT as well.
Thank you. My next question is, on the PDP, it shows that this proposed access road along the eastern edge of the property, it shows that it's ending just south of the building, and not continuing along the edge of the property to the detention pond and to the property line, where the future right-of-way would connect up to that. My question is, who will be responsible for constructing that in the future?
You might have a slightly outdated version of the PDP. The current PDP has the road extending all the way to the south, if I'm not mistaken. So, yeah.
Okay.
Hello. So the current version of the PDP does show the portion of the access road to the, to the south of the southern storage access to be completed in the future by the property owner, so it would be the expense of, of the owner of the self-storage there. Currently, there's no need to extend that road, and it poses some engineering issues, and so that's what we've discussed with staff on that.
My other question, my next question might be for staff. Did staff look at the Leach Field location next to the detention pond? Were there any water quality issues with that?
Our civil engineer did look at that, and there were some changes that were made, and at this point, this particular version meets all the requirements.
And my last question, I know they're not being required to put sewer in at this time because of the distance. Will they be required to tie into that when sewer reaches a certain point close to them, or participate in costs associated with that extension at some point in the future?
They will require, most likely, with anything that occurs on the northern lot, they would be required to construct sewer and connect into our sewer system.
Thank you.
Mr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since there's so many questions about the easements and access to other properties, could someone, either the applicant or the city, show us where, what the question is, so that I understand it a little bit better? I mean, I think the other map that is, this one shows some of them, and also just, this, okay, this is a little bit better. So, we're moving it. The access to these other properties is to the east of where the, the new road along the east side of this property would be, is that correct? Am I understanding what this map shows us, what this aerial view?
Yeah, so what this aerial view shows you is there's an existing access point just, just east of the proposed access location. And as the road comes south, it branches east-west and becomes a frontage road for five properties. And there, there is an easement that covers access to each of those five properties. And so I think, just to, just to clarify, we have no intent of removing that easement or cutting off any access that already exists through that easement. And if I, if I could go back to one of the points that was brought up regarding maintenance of this, a portion of that existing access would, would also be covered by right-of-way, which, staff could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the right-of-way would then be, you know, it'd be city right-of-way, so it'd be maintained by the city. So, a, a small portion of the existing access easement, and really the portion that's used by the self-storage, would, would be city right-of-way, therefore maintained by the, by the city. But, to answer, to answer your question, yeah, there, there's five properties that are served by an existing access road, essentially.
And they're all to the east?
There's one property to the west.
Okay.
And we, we have actually two points of access that are planned for that property to the west, one in the middle of the overall five-acre site here, that's shown in orange on this exhibit. So one, there, there's a future connection point for that property, and in the meantime, the existing access easement will be maintained and honored, and that existing access point along that frontage road will, will still be, will still be able to serve that property to the west.
Okay, so for your project, we're adding an access point, does the existing access point that's to the east of your property go away? Does CDOT require that that access point goes away?
I see, as far as access to the highway?
Yeah.
Yes. That is something that we're going to need to discuss with CDOT and the city and the county still. My understanding is that we're going to need to have one access in this location to the highway.
Okay. And so, also, the improvements to State Highway 72, somebody mentioned an acceleration lane, deceleration lane, are those in the middle of State Highway 2? Are they along the south side of, of 72? Where are those improvements going to be made on the highway?
So the improvements to the highway would include a left turn into the site that would meet state regulations, and that would, that would essentially, all those improvements would be able to be completed within the existing highway right-of-way, and would generally push the road a little bit to the, further to the north. There's a D cell lane for the right turn lane into the site, same story on that, there is, there's already a D cell lane for the right turn lane into the site, and at this point- And at this point, that length, I believe, is sufficient for this access point, according to our discussions with CDOT so far.
Okay.
But, that is something that through the FDP process, we would fish out all of those exact details.
Okay. A few other questions, Mr. Chairman. So, the annexation number one is that annexation of State Highway 72 from basically your property to the west, and is that to connect with existing city annexed part of 72?
It does. So, let's see.
Yeah, that map there.
Perfect, yeah. So, this is the slide that shows, the area in yellow is what we're proposing to annex. And adjacent to that, you see the cross-hatched areas, those are already part of Arvada. And so, we're continuing a portion of Highway 72 that has been annexed in Tarvada, just a little bit further down the road.
Right, okay. And just a couple other questions, parking spaces and the use of parking on the property itself. So, I could see that there were nine or 10 that were designated in the plans that we saw. You're proposing 15, I didn't see where those other ones are going to be, are they on the north side of the property where the proposed nine or 10 already are shown?
Yeah, they're actually on the south, adjacent to the loading area. There's three within the loading area itself, the covered area. Then, there's, I believe, three more flanking each side. It could, I think the shading line weights could be better, but we are just barely exceeding those standards, simply to have a little bit of buffer there. But, we really, generally, self-storage facilities don't need, this size, don't need more than 10 or 11 spaces, so.
Okay. Final question about the use of the parking spaces on the site, will customers be able to store a recreational vehicle, like a boat, or a construction trailer within any of these parking spaces?
I'm not sure about a construction trailer, but there's about potentially five or six units on the east side of the, I'm sorry, on the west side of the project that would be sized a little bit bigger for a boat of some type, they're a little bit larger, that's about 0.01% of all the units. But, yeah, there would be a potential for a larger vehicle to go in those units, so.
But, they wouldn't sit outside the unit?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you say outside?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that, there is no outside storage.
No, I don't care if they're covered and inside, that'd be fine with me.
I apologize.
Even if they're a construction trailer. And, okay, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Before you do, Commissioner Chairman Owens, I'm wondering, based on the evidence, I mean, there's clearly a lot of evidence that suggests that, you know, there's some work yet to be done, perhaps with respect to access, and a lot of potential players at that table, not the least of which is CDOT is issuing authority, perhaps the adjacent property owners, et cetera. I'm wondering if the condition number one with respect to, I believe it's the PDP at the point that you get to the PDP, assuming recommendations of approval on actions prior to the PDP, I'm wondering if that's condition number one might be strengthened if you're willing to, you know, cede some, cede, C-E-D-E, some control with respect to the minutia, if you will, that ends with, as indicated on the PDP, and that's kind of a precise, I think, restriction with respect to what ultimately might be the, kind of the working out of the issue of access with respect to CDOT again, adjacent property owners, et cetera. And rather than, you know, see things coming back, I would suggest something along the lines of that access to State Highway 72, meet the approval of city planning and traffic engineering staff and CDOT as issuing authority. Certainly, ultimately, CDOT will dictate, if you will, as issuing authority, what the access looks like out there, but that provides perhaps some bit of flexibility to work that issue of access out.
Mr. Goff, do you intend to make a motion?
Clarification, that particular addition to the motion would be to the PDP motion or one?
Yeah, if you note the staff recommendations on page 11, there are conditions that relate to the PDP, so I don't.
Thank you.
I haven't looked back to see if those same conditions might exist with respect to annexation, but if they do, I think you'd want to make.
Why, they? Okay, I'm being told it's just in the PDP. Thank you. Mr. Goff, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I will make the initial motion. I move that ANN 2017-0001 Trinity Storage Annexation Number One located at 15350 State Highway 72 be recommended to city councils for approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on page eight of the staff report.
Thank you, the motion is for approval, is there any discussion of the motion? Ms. Wolfschla?
I'm assuming we're including the staff recommendation as made by staff to meet the approval of the city and CDOT? Is that the next one?
We'll do that on the PDP.
Okay, never mind, I'm good.
So, I'd like to make a comment here on this motion, and it's uncommon in general, these types of projects are, I think, are good projects for growth, but it's bad when we don't work together. And so, I would encourage you, as we move forward, before you get to city council, to work together with the people that are around you. And I think a couple of the concerns I have specifically are around the easement agreement. It seems like you're disregarding, to me, it seems like you're disregarding the residential folks that are around you. They have an agreement that currently meets their needs, and it seems like you have very little concern for their needs. And so, I would encourage you to work with them, and I would encourage you to work with the adjacent landowner. That being said, if there's no more comments, everyone, please vote. There are seven yeses and zero nos, so that motion passes.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I move that ANN 2017-001 Trinity Storage Annexation Number Two located at 15350 State Highway 72 be recommended to city council for approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on page eight of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Goff, is there any discussion of the motion? The motion is to grant, all members, please vote. Sorry, Mr. Hannan, thank you. There are seven yeses and zero nos, that motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move that PDP 2017-.
We have to do the zoning first.
Okay, oh, I didn't know where this one was.
Yeah.
I got it right.
Zone first and then PDP.
Yes, we do, and I'll go ahead and take that, too. That's right. Go ahead.
All right, Mr. McGee.
I move that Z2017-0002 Trinity Storage Rezoning from Jefferson County SR-2 Suburban Residential to City of Arvada PUDBP, a Planned Unit Development Business Professional located at 15350 State Highway 72, be recommended to city council for approval. This motion is based on the finding of fact and approval criteria on pages eight and nine of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. McGee, is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all members, please vote. Seven yeses and zero nos, that motion passes. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that PDP 2017-0002 Trinity Storage Preliminary Development Plan located at 15350 State Highway 72 be recommended to city council for approval, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, items one through four, page 11. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages nine, 10, and 11 of the staff report, and should also include conversation as referenced, a conversation regarding access to Highway 72 that meets approval of the city of Arvada Planning and Development Department and CDOT, as well as the property owners.
If I might recite my recommendation, I think if it's, to be honest with you, I think if it's requiring the approval of adjacent property owners, there's a delegation of authority problem. What you want to do is condition the approval on access meeting the approval of city planning and traffic engineering staff, as well as CDOT as the issuing authority.
Right, thank you. Revised that it does meet approval with the city of Arvada Planning and Development Staff and CDOT.
And city traffic engineering.
And city traffic engineering.
Thank you. The motion is for approval, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Hannan?
Question for council, do we need to have the county involved in that discussion and our changes to condition one?
I'm assuming that the county will be at the table, but I really think you want your condition to relate to city staff and the issuing authority again, which is CDOT. Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all members, please vote. There are seven yeses and zero nos, that motion passes. Thank you for your presentation and good luck with your project.
You got that right, that's so we're changing this one, you don't need to read like that.
All right, our final set of items tonight are an ODP for Candela's, that's ODP 2016-005, PDP 2016-0015, and PP 2016-005. Staff, are there any posting or notification requirements?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the applicant was required to post signs on the property, send letters out to the neighborhood, and also the city staff, we did the notice on the paper, and those, the notification and also the post log are in order. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
No.
The staff report and posting log and affidavit of mailing are made a permanent part of the record. The staff will now make a brief presentation of the case.
I'm trying to put the PowerPoint on, so I'm going to have to wait for Rob to do that when he gets back. But, basically, what we have tonight is the Candela's ODP Amendment Six and Candela's filing for Amendment One, PDP, Preliminary Development Plan and Preliminary Plat. The applicant, Norris Design, represented by Bonnie Nizolik, and Arvada Residential Partners, represented by Brian Daly, are requesting approval of the Candela's Outline Development Plan and the Candela's filing for Amendment PDP and FDP, which is located north of State Highway 72 and Candela's Parkway. The proposed ODP Amendment Six Parcel Two will increase the number of single-family detached units and reduce the number of single-family attached units as follows. The increase of single-family detached goes from 293 to 355, creating 62 lots. What it also does is decrease the number of single-family attached from 297 DU's to 150 dwelling units maximum. And then, also, the ODP is updated to reflect the changes that have been through the Candela's filings, one through four, to further update the ODP. The maximum units with the ODP parcel will decrease by, from about 88 units, and the density will be further reduced to 2.6 units per acre, as compared to what the approved ODP Amendment filing five, I mean Amendment Five, which was 2,000, total of 2,038 units with a density of 2.78 units per acre. The proposed Candela's filing for amendment revises his development plans to that development, which will add the increase of single-family detached to that, which is about 62 units. The property is designated as suburban residential in the comprehensive plan and is within the Candela's ODP number of units required. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of the Candela's ODP amendment and the filing for amendment one, based on the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a representative from the applicant present? Would you please step to the podium, state your name, and spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
It's Bonnie Nizolik, N-I-Z-I-O-L-E-K, 1101 Bannock Street, Denver, Colorado, 80204. And we should have a presentation.
While they're bringing that up, I'm going to introduce myself, I'm Brian Daly, last name D-A-L-Y, I'll be speaking as well. Address 10914 Remick Ridge Road, Parker, Colorado.
Thank you. Thank you, staff and Planning Commission, for your time this evening and throughout the review process. We're glad to be here tonight to discuss the Candela's ODP Amendment Six, along with the Preliminary Plat and Preliminary Development Plan for filing number four, amendment number one. We have members of the development team here to answer any questions, Brian, who you just met, and Craig Veltisen with Terra Cause Capital, the master developer, myself and Jenna Beyond Delillo with Norris Design, and David Kuntz with Martin Martin. As you all know, much of Candela's Parcel Two, which is highlighted here, has been platted for residential units. Parcel Two is the area that is zone PUD-R. We'd like to start with the ODP amendment. The two areas highlighted in green show the location of the ODP changes. Green parcels on the left side of the screen include parcels 2H, a portion of 2I, 2J, 2L, 2M, 2P, 2Q, 2R, and a portion of 2E. These parcels are located within filing four, which we are replating for 342 units, which is an increase of 62 dwelling units compared to the existing ODP. Just to the right of this, we're combining two parcels, 2U and 2B, to create one overall ODP parcel of 150 units, which is a decrease of 147 units compared to the existing ODP. Between these two changes, we're proposing an overall decrease of 85 dwelling units. We've also updated a number of ODP parcels so that their allowed unit counts match what was previously proved in each filing. Two units were added to parcel 2KK, six were removed from parcel 2T, two removed from 2A, 35 removed from 2K, 38 were added to parcel 2N for a reduction of three units. Again, these changes are included so the ODP parcel counts are consistent with the existing approved FDPs and final plats. No actual layout changes from these approved plans are proposed. Here, we compare the existing ODP five with our proposed revisions in ODP six. We are proposing an overall reduction of units in parcel two from 2,038 to 1,950, which creates a density reduction of 2.8, 2.78 to 2.66. The open space provided remains the same at 164 acres, the parks provided remains the same at 70 acres, and the school dedication remains the same at 25 acres. Along with these ODP changes, we propose to amend the filing for PDP and preliminary plat. The image on top shows a lot layout and sizes that were originally approved in the filing for PDP and plat. The image on the bottom shows a lot layout and sizes we're proposing today. You can see the general layout is the same, but the lot mix has changed in response to current market conditions, which we'll explain in detail in just a moment. These filing four changes also resulted in updated. These filing four changes also resulted in updated street sections to better reflect the city's standard street sections. We've also updated the landscape plans based on these lot line and street section changes. With that, I'd like to introduce Brian Daly to go through the reasons why these revisions are necessary.
As Bonnie and Carol have explained to you sort of the technical of what we're doing, I'd like to focus a little bit on some of the history and why we're doing what we're doing. Candellas was initially conceived from about 2006 to 2009, when we were doing the master planning of this project with the city. In 2009, the original ODP was approved, the PDP, and at that time, we contemplated for this portion of the project to have roughly 2,200 residential units, almost 6,000 residential people living in these neighborhoods. When we did that, we programmed all of the parks and recreational, the open space facilities, the school land dedications to accommodate this kind of population. And I want to make this point, because even though we have some unit count changes and some shifting that we're proposing as a result of various conditions, some of which are topographical in nature, some of which are market conditions, the point we want to make here is that we have facilities that are well-suited to accommodate the residential population that we're ultimately going to have. There were two areas that were shown on the PDP. The two changes that we're proposing are really for two different reasons, and I'm going to start with the area that's in filing two, which deals with the loss of some of the single-family attached units that we're proposing in that area. We don't like losing any units if we can help it. We have been working on this particular portion of the site for a long time. We have approached several different builders about this site, and frankly, one of the things that we're finding about this particular portion of the project is some geographical, topographical constraints. If you look at the land plan that we have, there's an existing roadway, Candellas Boulevard, that essentially defines the southern border of the site. On the very north end of the site, there's actually a large open space drainage area, Big Dry Creek that runs through there, that also defines some elevations on the north end of the property, and we've had to kind of shoehorn in some of the residential development that exists that also shows on this plan. Candellas Boulevard has a slope on it that in many instances is around a 6% slope. From the west end of the site to the east end of the site, or the left end of this picture to the right end, there's about 150 vertical feet of drop as you go down Candellas Boulevard. We have also significant topography on the site, and so we've tried to show the topo here as well. It's a long skinny site. There's really two plateaus that show up on the site. Roughly two-thirds of it, there's about a 50-foot drop from Candellas Boulevard to sort of the back of the lot lines where we have existing residential homes. On the east one-third of the site, there's a little bit less topo, but there's still about a 30-foot drop across there. Because of this topography and because of existing street connections, we have three potential access points planned. In all the planning that we've done with the various builders that we've talked to, we think that this site is not going to accommodate a 20-unit-per-acre multifamily zoning or even a 12-unit-per-acre townhome product. We do want to maintain the single-family attached character of the site. We think it's important to have that diversity within our project. However, we think the site will lend itself to a product that's more like a paired home or smaller townhome buildings that might be three units in size. Based on the layouts that we've done with several different builders, we think 150 homes is an achievable goal that we can accomplish in this site, and that's really the reason that we're proposing this change to the ODP at this point. If we move further to the west and focus on the other portion of Candellas that we're also proposing a density shift, that's in filing four. This graphic shows a portion of filing four that we're planning to replat and what we're proposing to change. As you look at this graphic, you can see the property is divided east-west with a very large, green, open space. Big Dry Creek runs through there. We've actually constructed over the last year, in fact, we've done the grading on this whole site based on the prior approvals that we had of filing four. We've constructed the drainage improvements in this gulch to the tune of several million dollars in an effort to make sure that the school would have its drainage facilities in place so that it could open this coming fall. But we've held off on development of the lots in this parcel. Essentially, where we're showing, north of Big Dry Creek, which are lighter shaded lots, we have originally 80-foot-wide lots and 95-foot-wide lots. This was originally contemplated to be a custom, semi-custom neighborhood. It sits fairly high up on a hill. There's some extraordinary views from this property. As you move to the south side, you're a little bit lower in the valley, closer to the Big Dry Creek region. We have programmed 75-foot-wide lots in there. The reason that we're proposing some of the changes in this location are market-driven. We first began land development at Candellas in April of 2011. Our first home sales at Candellas began in 2012. At this point, we now have about five years of market experience, and in the chart on this graphic, what we have done is we have listed the home closings that we have through earlier this year, I think this is about a month and a half old now. We had about 695 home closings at this point, but we've broken those up by lot size, so you can get an idea of the kind of volumes that we're seeing by product type. Within Candellas, we have a number of different builders. Our business plan, just so it's clear, we're a land developer, and we sell finished lots to home builders who then construct homes, so we don't actually build homes. And at any given time, we might have seven to eight different builders operating. I think we probably had 10 different builders in our project over the course of our marketing period, the five-year period that we've mentioned. But one of the things I want to, I've tried to point out on this graphic, is the custom, semi-custom home section, which are really the larger lots that we have. To date, those account for about 6% of our total sales, 45 homes. We have had two builders building in that price bracket historically. We actually have an area within our community, within the filing one community, where we have the first custom, semi-custom area that we brought online in 2012. As I mentioned before, there were two builders building in there. On this graphic, the 45 homes that were sold by those builders are shown in blue. We continue to have 81 lots that are available that we're actively marketing. Now, we recently have brought in two more builders that are just getting started in there. I might also mention the two builders that we had actually fell out of their options because there was just simply a lack of enough volume to support the activity that they needed to make their project work for their business plan. The price points of this project generally started in the upper 600s, and I think our highest-priced product thus far is about a million four, a custom home. These are definitely upper-end product, not everyone can afford this. What we've seen from this experience is that the market is slower than what we thought it might be when we first programmed this back in 2009, and the PDP was originally approved. And so that's one of the reasons we're trying to make a change in filing four. We think it would be inappropriate to bring on more of this kind of product, simply because at this point, if we follow the same sales pace that we've had over the last five years, we have about a nine-year supply of finished lots, even in filing one, not counting what we would bring on in filing four. I also want to talk a little bit about pricing in general during this five-year period, because it also has a bearing on what we're doing. Our initial price points, home closings, when we opened in 2012, we started with single-family homes that were in the mid-300s price point. In 2012, our actual home closing average price was 418,000. Again, this is because we have a mix of product, some in the 300s, some were higher, you know, in the 500s and 600s for that average 418,000 price point. If you follow this bar graph over the period of five years, thus far in 2017, our average home closing is 581,000. We've seen approximately $160,000 of price increase over a five-year period, which is just a staggering increase. It's reflective of very good market conditions, but it's also making attainability of housing very difficult, which is part of the reason we're committed to making sure we maintain some of that single-family attached product in filing two, to try to target something on the lower end, something lower than 581, if we can get it. But also because we're trying to manage to this market, which is a changing market. What I've done on this next graphic is I've tried to illustrate two conditions, and take the lot sizes that we have in the existing plat, which is the grouping of boxes on the top portion of the page, and compare them with what we're showing on the proposed plat. Essentially, in our business, lot width determines, you know, there's different costs associated, the wider the lot, the more street, the more land area, the more expensive. That's fairly obvious, but I want to mention it anyway, because that's how it works. Lot prices also in turn dictate housing prices. On average, we find that most of the home prices tend to be, or the lot prices will tend to be about 20% of the overall base lot price. Builders tend to also have premiums and various options that they charge for different features to make customizations within the home. So on this particular graphic, I've showed the estimated base home sale price, and I've also shown one with options, which I've estimated at 15%. Keep in mind, these are estimates, but based on lot sizes, we can forecast that under the existing plat, our average home sale price with those lot sizes would be in the roughly just under $900,000. And we think we're approaching what we're seeing in filing one, where we have a very, very slow market. What we have sought to do with the replat is to maintain some of the diversity that you see with the number of product widths, various product types, various builders, so that there continues to be a diversity within these sub-neighborhoods. But our goal was to bring pricing down, and frankly, to increase units as an offset to some of the units that we've lost as we've developed Candellas over the years. By making the changes that we're proposing, we think that we're in a position to essentially bring this average price down to what we think is just under 700,000 instead of 889,000, which is about $160,000 or so, 180, 190 reduction. I might also add that the 699,000 projected sales price under the proposed plan is still considerably higher than what our 2017 price was, which was 583 thus far this year. So this is still going to be an upscale neighborhood. We're still differentiating the lot sizes that are up on the upper portion of the property from the lower portion of the property, both in terms of size and price point. The question that comes to mind is what will this look like? I went the wrong way, sorry. In this graphic, we have taken some photographs. On the left side, we have photographs of the existing product that's been built in Candellas filing one, in the custom, semi-custom area that we mentioned. Again, that area has had product ranging from the upper 600s on up to, the most expensive home was a million four. On the right side of the graphic, what we're showing is a product that is currently being built by TriPoint out at Candellas. This is being built on 75-foot-wide lots, which is the widest lot that we're proposing, and it's also the same size lot that we're proposing in what used to be the custom, semi-custom area. It's our view that we can still manage to deliver a very high-quality, high-end product in this area, and we think that in doing so, we're maintaining the kind of character that we originally envisioned at Candellas for this particular location in filing four. Last but not least, we've also looked at some of the other features with regard to the various changes that we're proposing in our plan. Some of those include, as I've mentioned before, user sizing. Our facilities have already been sized to accommodate more than the number of residents that we will ultimately have, so we were set in terms of facilities. But we've also looked at what that means in terms of operating costs, and essentially by doing the reduction and the increase of units that we're proposing, we actually come out a little bit better with a slight reduction in single-family attached units and a slight increase to the detached units. We're actually gaining a little bit of assessed valuation and less users for the facilities than what we would have otherwise had. So this is actually pretty helpful to our operating budget. In your package, we also provided a developer rationale letter, and we looked at this in terms of city tax as well. We used a report that Tom Thibodeau had prepared for the city when we originally did this project and used some of that modeling. My partner Craig prepared a modeling that showed the city tax side over a period of 10 years, there's actually about a million dollars in tax revenue gain based on the adjustments that we're proposing in filing four. So we think that, in conclusion, while we're proposing some adjustments to accommodate some physical changes and some market changes, we think that we're doing that, certainly the density adjustments in filing two are done with a more accurate understanding of the market than what we had back in 2009 when we envisioned this, and yet we're still maintaining the integrity of that single-family attached product. We think that's important. While I'm on that note, I might also add that even though we've had a very, maybe slower than we'd like go with the custom, semi-custom product, we're also maintaining the integrity of that with our builders and making sure that that quality level is adhered to. In filing four, we're targeting to achieve a more attainable price point, if 700,000 is what we're defining as attainable. We, you know, we're doing this because of a limited luxury home market that we have experience with. We're still maintaining a variety of lot sizes, maintaining price points to serve a broader range of potential buyers, and lastly, maintaining the neighborhood character that we think is important and the diversity. With that, that really concludes our presentation. We do have our team here. If you have any questions for us, we're happy to try to answer those for you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. We'll have comments from the public, and then we'll have questions for you, I suspect.
Thank you, sir.
I'll now open the hearing for comments from the public, first those in favor of the application. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against the application? Seeing none, I think we can skip the rebuttal. So at this time, I will close the public input portion of the hearing and open the hearing for discussion, questions, and comments from members of the planning commission. Ms. Connell.
A question of the developer. So with the larger homes there, this is a way of including, as you have said, various other types of housing to attract what is the market right now, and you would be able to probably easily find developers who would be willing to produce these type of buildings?
That is correct. We, in fact, we have a number of builders that are eager to see this get through and for us to go forward with development of this.
Thank you.
Mr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So thank you for the rationale document that you submitted to the city. The city included it in the staff report about this request, these multiple requests. I was first disappointed that we were seeing 100 dwelling units being pulled off the table, and as you mentioned, you don't like to do that either in a market like Denver Metro where housing units are fewer than we need by a long margin. And I better understand why, market conditions, you know, when you started in 2008 with the original outline development plan, I mean, the market crashed basically for housing, and I did notice that you had a higher dwelling or density rating that was above three. We've now pulled that down to even higher, I think, than what the average home usually has, 2.5. It's, you're proposing 2.7, so still higher. So I do understand the rationale better of your request. I think the smaller lot sizes, the widths of 50, 55, 60, and as you showed in your graph of the selling, you sell 50% of your housing on those smaller lot sizes. So I think that's a good change, and the additional lots with those smaller widths, I hope you continue that. I think millennials will maybe even be interested in those kind of products.
Yes.
A little bit more about why we're eliminating 150 of the single-family attached, the town homes, the condos, and we're adding some of the smaller lot-size widths. Can you go into that a little bit more? I mean, that's cutting in half what this filing would have had originally.
Yes, that is correct. As I mentioned in the presentation, this site has a number of physical constraints.
Yeah.
We have three existing access points that we are limited in terms of circulation. Within the city code, there are also limitations on street slopes, so when we design and turtle to that, there's only a certain level of steepness that you can achieve to get from point A to point B. And even in the layout, we've had probably three or four builders at this, as of this date, that have looked at different layouts for this, trying to figure out, because it's a gorgeous site, has great views, but they all come back with the topography as being the biggest problem. The more dense units for condominiums tend to be bigger building structures. They require a bigger, flatter pad, and while you might be able to get a few of those on there, even with that, you're still going to have a much lower density than what you would typically see on a condominium project where you have a 6% cross-slope or even a 4% or something less. So it's purely geographical.
Well, and the market, if builders are telling you that it is difficult to consider the type of housing that you had planned for this because of the slope and the retaining walls that you've got there already and stuff like that?
That is correct, but, and we do have interest in single-family attached housing. It's just smaller-sized structures for the site.
Right. Well, I do encourage you to keep price points as low as you can. Obviously, you still need to make a profit, but we need the diversity of housing prices within the entire city, but Candellus would be a good place to include that as well. So, and I do want to also thank you for designing this area as a very walkable community, you know, sidewalks, five, six-foot sidewalks on each side with separation from the street and a lot of parks and open space. One final question, I noticed that in the staff report, it said there is going to be some parking restrictions put in place, I think because of the changing way that you're going to do the lots and those kind of things. And I just had a question, are any of those parking restrictions going to be on streets where a house or a townhome will face a street and there's parking restrictions in front of where they live?
To fully answer your question, one of the things that we looked at in connection with adding 62 homes in filing four, we worked with your city staff to do a traffic study to see what those impacts would be, and we worked over the last several months to really identify specifically intersection by intersection, street by street, what we think the trip generation would be. What will be changing is two things. What was mentioned in the presentation is first off, the street width on the new roads that will be built in filing four will be built slightly wider than what they would have been had they been constructed under the old plat, primarily because the city codes have changed, and we've agreed to make that change, even though they're kind of at the back of the community, we still think that's appropriate. There are other changes that we've discussed with the city staff, and those include making some modifications to some existing collector roads within Candellus. And so there's some restriping and reconfiguring of bike lanes that will take place on West 93rd, which is on this diagram, it's the lowest east-west street that you see that goes from the blue area, which is the school site, and it goes straight horizontal across the page all the way to Candellus Boulevard. That's one of the streets that we identified as being in need of some modifications. Additionally, there's another street that is a collector road that goes through filing four that we've agreed to make some modifications. It goes south, and it will be really a future primary access onto State Highway 72, where there is actually some planned signalization at a future point. We have also further agreed recently to have our traffic consultant go out and do some signalization studies at the intersection that I just described at Highway 72, as well as the intersection of Candellus Boulevard and Highway 93. Because of our traffic studies, your staff felt like it was important to get a good look at those right now. The only other thing that we're discussing and we're negotiating on is there are a handful of lots that we're talking about, the garage handing, and we're working with our, we have a builder that actually wants to come in and start models on those. And so we're trying to negotiate how we can best accommodate the city's request on garage handing and dealing with those requests. So it's a bit of a work in progress, but by and large, most of the requests that your staff has asked of us, we've agreed to do.
Okay, well, I just encourage, don't put parking restrictions in front of someone's home. That I saw in the public meeting report, that parking was an issue to some people already, and I would hate to have somebody move into a home and they can't park in front of their house.
Right.
That would seem to be a restriction that would be difficult. Thank you, Mr. Daley. Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Thank you. Any further questions? Ms. Connell.
This is a question of staff. Perhaps I should probably know the definition of this, but what is the definition in the conclusion for the recommendation of a red line markups? What's a red line markup?
So basically, what it is, the staff looks at the plans, and we identify on the plans what changes. So that's what they call, we call red mark, red line markup of the plans. So in addition to our comments, we would also attach the plan that we're referring to, that we're, need to be changed or revised or additional things.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGee.
A question along those lines. Can staff summarize briefly what those red line markups and the staff comments, kind of the categories that they go into? What did you see that you're recommending to the developer?
I'm going to defer to traffic, and most of that is some of the discussion that Brian has talked about.
Okay.
Right, so how Brian did he mention, we had to go in and restrict some parking to accommodate the added traffic volumes with the additional lots. So those have all been addressed in these plans that you have in front of you. So the widening at the intersection of Culicula Court and Highway 72 for the future signalized intersection, those are depicted on these plans. The modification stripings to West 93rd Drive are also reflected. So those are the kind of markups that are included in our red lines.
And those are the bulk of the markups?
Yes.
Traffic? Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that ODP 2016 hyphen 0005, Candellus Outline Development Plan, Amendment Six, located at the northeast corner of La Dentacorte and State Highway 72, be recommended to City Council for approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages nine and 10 of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hannan. The motion is to approve. Is there any discussion of the motion? Mr. Hannan.
I would like to thank the applicant and staff for the great work. This is a really well-put-together explanation of your changes. I was a little concerned about impact on existing, and you've handled that very well, so thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all members please vote. There are seven yeses and zero nos. That motion passes. Mr. Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that PDP 2016 hyphen 0015, Candellus Filing Number Four, Amendment One, Preliminary Development Plan, located at West 93rd Street and Candellus Parkway, be recommended to City Council for approval, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, item one, page 13. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages 11, 12 of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hannan. That motion is for approval. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all members please vote. Seven yeses and zero nos. That motion passes. Mr. Hannan.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Finally, that PP 2016 hyphen 0005, Candellus Filing Number Four, Amendment One, Preliminary plat located at West 93rd Street and Candellus Parkway, be recommended to City Council for approval, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, item one, page 13. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages 12 and 13 of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hannan. That motion is for approval. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all members please vote. I'm sorry, Mr. McGee, did you?
I just saw a request to speak there.
Sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to add to Commissioner Hannan's thank, thank you for a good summary. I think this is an important development for our, that a planned development like this takes a lot of shifting, there's shifting parts and moving parts, and it's a beautiful area just south of the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. So I agree that you did a good job explaining. I think your additional presentation today also helped me understand kind of the dynamics of the market and how it's changing, so thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes, seven to zero. So all your motions passed. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Do we have any other items from staff tonight?
Rob's given me permission to leave this up, so I wanted to just quickly say, the city attorney's office is engaging in some modest restructuring, mainly kind of with a goal of taking us as individual attorneys out of our silos and working more collaboratively across teams, et cetera. So to that end, many of you already know Reed from, very well, from your experience and his role as counsel to the Board of Adjustment, but Reed Betzine will be, well, Reed and I will be working together going forward on matters of land use and planning, and so you'll presumably see him quite a lot, and Reed's right behind me. I don't know if he has anything to say or not, but anyway, I'll turn it back over to Rob unless Reed wants to jump in. Very uncharacteristic of Reed.
Thank you, Randall. I'm sure that there's a lot that you'll be able to teach Reed over the next several years.
All right. The only other items to discuss are the fact that we need to cancel the meeting on July 4th unless you have a burning desire to be here. So if we could have a motion on that item, and then also a motion to cancel the meeting on July 18th because we don't have any items on that agenda.
Wow. Mr. Hannan.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we cancel the July 4th and July 18th meetings.
Outstanding. Is there any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all members please vote. And we have canceled our next two meetings. Thank you very much. Anything else from staff? Then we are adjourned. Thank you.